At this time, we'll call the Tuesday, November fifteen, twenty twenty-two meeting. Lisa and the owner from the auditor's office and Luann Gokiar Administrative Assistant. And in just a second, we will have Todd Kenny come back. And there he is.
All right.
Going by Todd Kenny, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Morning. Okay, so first item on here is a a field entrance permit. And I just met with Jim earlier this morning. And so I guess this is a bigger discussion. I think it was in twenty twenty. We kind of changed the entrance policy. Where the county doesn't provide maintenance on those ones are installed. So you basically get out of the maintaining private driveways with road use tax business, which is a good thing.
We still, we still clean like for flow of water and stuff though to maintain them that way, right?
If we need to, if we do anything like that, then we would, we would charge the owner. I could if no longer function or plug holes were repaired by the county prior to widening of the driveway. So if existing covert is deemed usable by the county, but property owners request to complete new full length covered such coverage will be installed by the property owner at their expense. So it kind of deals with when it gets wiped. But as far as the maintenance of the covert, that's under the property owner's expense. The way you look at that is, does the road, is the traveling public driving on the road need that driveway to drive on the road? The answer is no.
No, but we need the waterfall because I think we just did one last year over on two on or what is it, hundred fifty of it's a, it's a spring like that. It was plugged or half full of material and I know we cleaned it out. I mean, we didn't maintain the
That'd be part of ditching. I mean, cleaning up the dirt out of the ditches.
So maintenance by the county, it says Jackson County Second Roads Department does not provide routine maintenance to entrances on roads under Jackson County's jurisdiction. Unless it's a beneficial, beneficial to the traveling public. So I guess you could stress that to me if waters potted in the right of way. Uh, what, I mean typically what should happen is you call the person and say, you know, you need to, you know, if usually if you dig out the plug, then you get a decent rain, it'll flush through. But if not, they need to maintain that. Um, you know, you have hundreds of driveways in the county. I'm guessing closer to a thousand. And if you, you know, you think about it, if there's no reason that the traveling public doesn't need the driveway to drive on the road. Um, the drainage of the road doesn't need driveways for drainage. Driveways are maintenance issue for because they block water. Uh, there's snow traps you need. So every time you have a driveway, you you have this additional maintenance. So but get getting back to the original, I guess, question I have is, so the permit, the permit requires that a new zinc coated riveted corrugated corrugated metal pipe be installed. So the question is now that you guys don't maintain them, like if the pipe goes bad and all that, it's on to the property owner to replace it. For years and even in Clinton, we, we never allowed plastic because people burn their ditches. You don't put them incorrectly. They sag the egg. Uh, and then it was the county's problems to maintain or fix those after the fact. So now that the county doesn't do that, do you want to allow plastic? That's the question.
He wants to put a plastic tube in.
He would prefer to, yes. Yeah, I, uh, they're, they're cheaper. I, I don't know. They're they're, I don't, I'm just guessing. I'm gonna probably ten to twenty, thirty percent cheaper. I'm gonna go.
I guess my thought on that is, is his color. I mean, if he wants to put a plastic one in there, still has to maintain it. Why should we care?
That's why I'm, I agree. That's why I'm bringing it up because
I mean, if it goes bad or it don't hold up to the weight he puts on it, that's his baby, not ours.
Yeah, the only, the only potential issue is if it, you know, if you don't put the plastic pipe in correctly and you burn your ditch every year. You, you know, chances are you're going to have to replace that plastic pipe at some point or dig it up and, and relay it.
Again, it's his baby.
That's correct. So it's just we gotta, the county has to be the I mean, the, the, I guess, the force of, hey, your driveway is holding back water. As long as it's not holding back water. I mean, if it's you know, if it's caved in and all that stuff and he has issues getting in and out, obviously that's, that's the property owner's issue that he has to deal with.
And he realizes that.
Who does the applicant? Well, my question would be is if we, if the board wants to allow plastic, we change the permit and then that's now anybody that applies has their choice. They can use CMP or they can use plastic. Because I would say you're gonna allow plastic, we need to change the permit to allow it. And then it's that way from here on until you guys want to change.
So it specifically says in the permit now that it's got to be corrugated pipe?
Entrance shall be a new zinc coated riveted corrugated metal pipe.
So I wanted to put a concrete one in my driveway and Clark would not let me put concrete in.
So that would be another one. I would allow concrete as well. I mean,
So I guess your recommendation to even to Clinton's history or your expertise, you're saying that we're gonna put this on you. Put this on you because you're the expert at it. That you would, you would, you don't have an issue.
Currently in Clinton County, we still don't allow plastic pipe.
But would you?
I think yeah, it would be up to the supervisor, but I, I mean, you know, plastic pipe is put in all over the place. I mean, it's not like plastic pipe isn't used. Uh, construction industry in industrial sites, you know, plastic pipe is used all the time. The big thing for us was if you, you know, because a lot of people burn their ditch, that plastic pipe doesn't hold up that well. So neither really just metal, but it's better. Uh, I, I would not have a problem allowing plastic. It's the only thing I would see is that we might have to spend a little more time inspecting the driveways and they get put in so they get backfilled properly. So that would be one of the things I would change in the permit. If we're going to allow plastic, then we need to probably have a little more stipulation about how it gets installed. It gets installed per the manufacturer's recommendations, which typically means you have aggregate bedding up to the spring line of the pipe. Uh, so you don't just throw in there chunks of dirt and then level it off basically.
So if I remember correctly, are they required like eighteen inches of material on top and dirt on top of the pipe? Is that correct?
It just depends on the pipe. So that's why I would if you, there's all different kinds of, uh, strength of pipe and uses a plastic pipe. I would put it just the word that it per the manufacturer's recommendations. So if they select, it's going to be a double wall. Uh, you know PVC, whatever pipe, then you could look that up and say the manufacturer recommends for commercial industrial use. This is how it gets installed.
So when do we control that? I mean, we inspected to say you didn't do it like per manufacturer or you didn't do it? I mean, it's still their problem if it
Right, but I would put it in the permit that you have to install it for the manufacturer recommendations because otherwise you're, you're asking for problems in the future. But again, if the county's not maintaining it, the thing is, if you don't put it incorrectly and it sags or eggs, you're, you're going to have issues with drainage. And then that becomes a county problem to make sure that gets addressed by the property owner. So just try to keep keep the county not having to be such a watchdog and then making sure, you know, the private property owner that builds the driveway does it right the first time, they shouldn't have to have any issues with it, right? That's the, that's the point.
So is there a huge difference in costs?
I'd have to price it, uh, yeah, I don't think so. I mean, it's, it, it's less expensive for a plastic pipe. But I also think it takes a little more when you put it in as far as backfilling and make sure you get it. You know, you get rock around it, you know, select backfill around it and that kind of thing. But I definitely think it's probably less expensive.
I think, yeah, might be a little easier to work with the far away ways too. Maybe there ain't much difference. I, I don't have an issue with it.
So the reason I bring it up is I, I talked to Jay, he's not I think he's got some time yet before he really needs his driveway in. I think you said April of next year. Um, so I would just table this permit request. I could bring, I could edit the permit document and then I would bring that back for the board's approval. The, the board would approve new language to allow plastic material pipe. And then moving forward, any application just depends on the, the property owner can choose and we can put uh, reinforced concrete pipe in there as well.
I don't want the price of that either.
Yeah. So the other thing too, uh, the, the, another question is this, the permit requires new new CMP corrugated metal. Do we want to still require a new plastic, new CMP, new RCP pipe? Or are you gonna allow used?
I would say if we're not doing it for the, for the metal, we wouldn't do it for the
We were doing it for the metal though.
Yeah.
Yeah. So right now the current permit says it has to be new CMP.
Yeah.
So the question is, if while we're editing the permit, do we just remove the new from it and just say allow these three types of materials and you don't care if it's used or not?
I would, I would leave them use, use stuff too. They might be taking a driveway out and have it been called.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't want to open a can of worms either and say we're going to have a bunch of issues with plug pipes and damaged pipes.
That's right.
You know, they putting in a half used pipe that's already got rust hole in it. I mean, who, who says that's a good pipe? Do you inspect the pipe when they put it in then? Or the, I would say, I should say?
Yeah, I don't, we haven't, we haven't been in a position yet to say we're going to reject that pipe because it's too deteriorated because we've only been allowing new material.
Right. I mean, some of your local contractors, of course, have pipes that they sell periodically, whether it be for in the pasture somewhere or in the road ditch, but yeah, I think you still have to have something in there to say that we have to.
We can put it in there, the, the, the pipe material must be inspected and be approved by the, by the secondary road department. Um, so if a guy wants to propose using used material, we get a look at it ahead of time.
Yeah. Size too, like as the size for the load that's going through.
That's correct. So the permit, we get it, we stipulate the diameter and then the length based on whether, you know, it's on a paved road or a gravel or
I think as long as you were able to inspect a used pipe before it's placed in the driveway, I, I can find what they want, but
You know, I'm not gonna, uh, this potentially doing this will potentially create more future maintenance issues where we have to, county has to step in and say, hey, you need to fix this driveway. It's causing issues. The potential for that is there, right? I definitely think that, but um, I, I do think for the the private property or needing driveways, allowing a different material is probably something that is not necessarily a bad thing, but it does have, it's there, it, it has benefits and it has, uh, issues potentially too. You know, the benefit is that that's you know, it's potentially less expensive, but also you could have future maintenance issues with it. So anyway, that's why I bring it to you guys to make the decision.
I don't have a dis, I don't have an issue with the plastic pipe or that type of material. I'd still say that we have to have the authority to go inspect the metal pipe if it's used. Um, you know,
I would say any pipe, if they're gonna use any kind of
I would agree, you know.
I would also make a motion to table the action on the entrance permit for Jim Erie.
One second. The motion and the second to table after the engineers. Our request for a, a field entrance, all those in favors, the I.
So I know there's a few driveways that have bridges instead of culverts. Do you have anything on that either?
So the policy says we don't maintain private entrances. The way that's worded is that doesn't matter if it's a bridge, an eight foot diameter cupboard or a twelve inch diameter cupboard. Um, we don't in, in my mind, there's no reason why the county should be maintaining a bridge for private property access.
Okay.
We got enough bridges on roads to maintain. I don't think we want to ask for more.
No, no, I wasn't. I was just seeing the difference. Some people put bridges instead of a cupboard and
Yeah, I would say any drainage structure, that's how I would word it. So whether it's a culvert or a bridge, you know, it's, it's, it's a drainage structure for your driveway. That's, you know, that's how
Another one across our road from my, that, um, bridge there.
Okay.
It's got a pretty good floor.
Okay, um, any other discussion? None of all those in favor?
I, I
closed.
See you. Okay. All right. Second item is a fund agreement for the city of Monmouth and the city bridge money they receive. Uh, pretty standard agreement, other than it lists the city and the county is, is a joint recipient. So if you remember, this is where we're going to do the design for them. We have a, we'll do an agreement with the city. Uh, we do the design will be the CACO for the job. When it's done, we make payments to the contractor. County will be the, the bank, if you will, making payments. And then when this, when the DOT reimburses the city, I think the way this is set up now, they'll reimburse the county. The state so we'll necessarily have to come through, so. Oh.
You need to add on that and make motion to approve.
I would say the motion and, uh, second to approve the funding agreement with the city of Monmouth.
And your authorizing chair and auditor signatures?
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor. Hi, motion carried.
Okay, um, quick update on construction project work. Um, so I talked about it last week, the four seventy-fifth Avenue Bridge, South Main. All the work items are complete. We're still waiting for the DOT to do their inspection. So we can process what's called a Form four thirty-five. That's where they sign off and say all the work meets their approval too. And then, um, that's when we can start the process of reviewing final quantities, get the contractor's agreement of final quantities, sign the semi-final voucher and then start the process for closeout. So um, uh, hundred and seventy-fifth, uh, bridge, uh, Farmers Creek, that opened last Thursday. It's right off of sixty-one there, this is the west. Uh, last Friday, we poured the deck on two hundred sixteen street, that'll be twenty eighty-eight. Um, we'll probably break a deck beam from that on Wednesday. If that breaks, uh, with a good compressive strength, flexional strength, then we should be able to open it probably this weekend. Uh, we got a little bit more, obviously finished work to do, but before we start putting weight on the bridge, we need to get a good break on the beam. Um, the Iowa zero two five two, five hundred seventy-six Avenue Bridge down there by Green Island, um, that on Friday, they drove most of the north abutment pile. I think they have to finish some of the wing pile. And then they're going to be starting driving the, uh, south abutment wing pile today. And then I think the plan is, is to do a deck or early next week. And then it'll probably stay closed until the following week. We'll break a beam, beam breaks so we can get on it, start finishing it. So back on wood, we, uh, hopefully by the end of the week of December fifth, we should have that bridge done and all of our construction projects done.
Plan this being
I mean, that's
Uh, we make these beam boxes. There, uh, there's two different sizes, but they're six by six typically. I think they're, uh, twenty twenty-seven inches long. Uh, it's such a rectangular beam, you make it, when you pour the deck, you make these beams. Um,
Out of
Concrete. So it's a concrete, you're testing the concrete that's going into the bridge deck.
Oh, so you might
separate from the deck.
Yeah, it's just a sample. Basically make it a sample beam and then you break it to measure the compressive strength to see when you could put load on the
And how do you compress that? With what?
Beam breaker. It's a little it's like a, it's a, just a hydraulic
Yeah.
Like a jack.
You gotta gauge on it.
Yep, little pressure gauge.
Excellent. Learn something new every day.
So, yeah. So it's not like when you you go for the P test, you can't take not a beam breaker from somewhere else, beam somewhere else.
No, it's, it's funny you say that though too, like, uh, so the, the deck they poured last Friday, we're out there, you know, Dan's got like a plastic shroud around the whole deck and he's got the sound, the heaters underneath, uh, because we're pouring and you know, below freezing temps. So typically you'd make the deck, the, 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 the the beam, right? And then you come set it on the deck underneath the blankets, come back the next day and you bring it into like the wash bay is where they guys put them. So it's carrying out in a heated wash bay versus the the actual decks out here in, in the cold. So when you break the beam, it, I don't, I kind of it's still, that's the, that's a, an approved way to do it. But I also had him leave it beam out on the deck. So we'll break one out of the wash bay on Wednesday, that breaks good. Then we'll grab the one off the deck and break it the same and make sure we get the same kind of result from the deck because I kind of I get, I get worried. If it was like, you know, sixty, seventy degrees out, you know, I, I wouldn't would worry about it. But when you're out there throwing heat on a bridge to keep it above freezing, it, I kind of get a little worried about the the lag in the, in the hydration of the, of the deck out in the cold, so.
That's why we're antsy about jail. Pouring concrete in this cold weather. Yeah.
I mean, you do it, but you have to take special process to do.
These, uh, new I C F forms insulated concrete are great because they're two inches of star form on both sides. Really only you do is cap the top and it's slates itself and concrete creates a lot of heat on someone's car.
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's, you know, we, so we check, check the temperature of the concrete underneath what we pour to make sure it's staying in the range that's acceptable too. So a little laser thing, so. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Good.
Maybe. Okay, the next item is visitors and citizen. Gosh.
I, uh, yeah, it's been a minute since I stopped over and said hi. So I just wanted to show face again and
Friday. Reports that it was no shade November. That's, I heard you say that.
It's, it's, yeah. Yeah, I wanted Hudson this weekend. And I think from Wednesday to Monday, I'm gonna let it grow. It's gonna be a mustache. There's nothing down here that looks good. We're giving my mustache too much credit in the first place.
You have probably credit to the face department, but you said you were applying to it.
I started and I said, this looks bad. So very keen memory.
Our son's a placement for Gavin Board.
Oh, yeah.
They can wear a beard now.
Yeah.
They came up Saturday night and being a full red beard. Surprise.
What he heard.
Yeah.
I'm sure. So well, I just want to congratulate the new supervisor elects and I hope you're not a stranger on the conservation board and everything. So um, and, and Todd had approached me maybe a week or two ago about, uh, South Main Bridge lighting. And I got to kind of cover some ground on that with our committees yesterday. So it sounds like we're in full favor of that. And Frank and Matt Buck are gonna meet and maybe talk about a layout and a kind of a proposal. Um, we just yanked a bunch of poles off of these class streets. So maybe we have the poles currently and it's just kind of one of those what are the lights? What's the layout and setup? But I hope to come with a cost and maybe kind of pick Todd's brain a little bit about this topic and, and some other things that are on my mind as well about, you know, our flat street project next year and some of the construction engineering. So I just kind of want to give you an update on those things and say hi. And again, just welcome Don Schwenker and then Michael to the board and then I, you know, I told these guys when they came on, it came from the Cal and kind of the powerhouses there were the, the city and the county and Northern Illinois University and and the city and county are pretty good neighbors to each other. So I, I hope to preserve and maintain and grow that relationship in any way possible. Um, can't say the same for Northern Illinois, but that's just the way it was there. So I come from a system where we work pretty well together. Um, other than that.
And we're happy he does.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a it's best to have a good relationship and we haven't had that type of dialogue in the past. So we're very appreciative of you coming to visit us.
Thank you.
And I know a lot of people are going to be very happy. There's some lighting on the new bridge.
Yes, yeah. Probably no small ticks down there that people have been talking about that I'm aware of is some sort of reflective tape next year. Uh, I'm sure the adhesive wouldn't be very good now, but um, if you're going north or south, you know, you have some sort of barrier that could send you up and over if you're
Absolutely.
Come out of your lane. So
We don't want to do that.
No. I don't.
The bridge really looks good.
Does.
Really does.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, this time we'll be joined by Marty Hoodler, our maintenance supervisor.
Morning.
Morning.
Another beautiful day in Jackson County.
Pretty out there.
Huh?
It actually is pretty.
When I got my cup of coffee, I just sang, it looked, it started to look a lot like Christmas. I don't think they appreciated it, but I did sing it. Uh, just things I've been working on for my department, um, we got some for the jail site, we got, I got bids for the furnace. The furnace is installed as of Friday. It's not hooked up quite yet. I got an LP tank there onsite, but we couldn't put it in place because the forms for whoever the construction company was in the way. I went down yesterday and moved them. They're supposed to come back. Um, either today or tomorrow and put the tank and hook the furnace up. So John's got some heat in there. Most of the wiring for the building is done, um, couple of lights on the outside come on. It went down there this morning. It was the first time I have seen the lights on, on the outside. Really lights up nice. Um, inside of the building.
Are they motion lights or?
I think I'm gonna go with a timer because when I went down there, no way around, they were off. So I, I don't know that Larry, to be honest with you. Um, I will find that out though. I think, I think what?
Is there a kind of security camera on that building?
Not at this time though. Not that it makes a difference, but I do go down through there, loop through there in the morning. Uh, when I, I do the same for the operation review and senior citizen, just to uh, somebody likes to put dump the garbage in the senior citizen building, not a whole lot, but then the fact they just drop a sack or that often that I pick it up. Um, but I don't believe I know there's no
Taking that tree out, that was a game changer.
Oh, good.
It looks so much nicer.
I left, there's a, there's a little maple there. I left it there. You know, it, I don't think it'll hurt nothing. I thought, and I trimmed it up so it would maybe look better.
Wonderful.
I didn't realize how much garbage was under the tree, meaning railroad ties, I pieces of iron. I had no idea that stuff was under there, but I cleaned it all up and it's gone. Uh, the brick, the trees and stuff I took to the compost pile, but the railroad ties, I took them to landfill because they had all sorts of nails and bolts and stuff in them, so. Um,
And I still think that was the playground area for the kids. They had sand in those.
I think you're right.
Yeah. And that's the only area that the kids could go out.
But I'll, they apparently were out back where it was, was it? Now we got the new improvement.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that could be.
Yeah.
I knew there was a couple there, but there are like eight of them in there. I'll find out. Um, I gotta, I got made in contact with a gentleman. He's gonna come and bring this stump down there. I'm gonna do the one here. We're gonna re-brain this one out here because it's just right on top of the ground and the grass won't grow. And then I'm gonna do one over here. They, they, they ground them, but they're just there, you can't get dirt on top. Nothing grows. So I got that. He's supposed to get ahold of me, um.
You know, conservation.
He usually grows about a foot eight though too.
No, I didn't. They did that out there, yeah. Well, he's the one that we got from the care facility and he did a really super job and he was dirt cheap, I thought.
Okay.
And hoping he's that way for here. Um, let's see. Uh, over at the jail, they had phones so you could talk through to like somebody is in prison, they had visitors. Well, we took them out and then I capped all the holes and everything for them. The toilet, I did some toilet work over there. Come to find out somebody bumped the valve on the I don't know if you ever been back in there, but there's a pit. And we always used to climb down in there. We made a set, uh, set of stairs to go down in there. And somebody, I won't mention his name, but actually when he slid it back in, shut the water off. It took me a while, but I did figure out what was wrong with the toilet. So um, as far as I know, we're done at the welcome center, uh, nobody's still come and picked up the big map. I have that out here in the shed. Uh, somebody, I thought somebody was gonna come and get that, wasn't there or not?
Well, I think the, the people from Sevula wanted both of them, so
they haven't taken the sign down in Sevula either because when I was down there last Tuesday, the, the big sign was still up.
The one out front, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we didn't touch that one, uh, but I do have that map that was right by the door. Okay. Um, the stuff down in the basement.
We maybe you'll have to call Tom Devine because he's the one that said that they wanted it. Tell him to get it out of there.
Okay, the stuff down in the basement, I don't know, we were gonna have a sale and then I think that got changed or something, but we really need to get that out of there.
You're right, absolutely.
Um, and, and the stuff in the north lobby too. It just, we, we got, we got more stuff than we even know what to do with.
So we're gonna use that big conference table?
The, the one we got from the I So I.
The one we got from the welcome center is down there now.
Yeah, I think Mike kind of sanded that up, tried to fit it through the big stain in the middle. The coffee table, the one you want has to be bolted down in my. I don't know if you can back me up on this, but it has to be bolted down to the floor to make it sturdy. And nobody really wanted that down in there because they rearranged that so many different ways. Okay? But it's up to you folks.
Well, the people that did not want it. Would be the, uh, they're getting a new building, so.
Yeah, but it could be like the jail. It could be two years from now because they're waiting for the same stuff, I do believe.
That's true.
Yeah.
So what do we gotta do with stuff down there?
You tell me. I don't think nobody wants it.
Ninety percent of that down there needs to go.
Right.
If there's some cabinets. That secondary roads can use or somebody can use, I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, we need to do something with that. Do you tell me? Um.
Let me, let me interrupt.
Okay.
Been a little busy.
Oh, I am.
Haven't had time to do eleven.
I know.
Okay, so now we get past this week. This week, there's nothing else can be done this week. This week is our week full. So if we transition into next week, I believe I asked you to bring me up some kind of a colored tape. Like a a blue painter's tape or something we talked about. So my my suggestion at this point is to take some blue painter's tape. We'll mark stuff that immediately can go for recycling. I think we can get that stuff out. We know that probably nobody's gonna want that at all, which will leave the stuff that I believe will be. Able to sell. What I would suggest then, my my opinion is, is we would put, get all of the stuff out first, get it recycled. Whatever is remaining is things that we believe we can sell. And then what we would do is put a a bid sheet on top of everything and give everybody the option to come in and to bid on it.
So you're talking personnel or public?
Every. Anybody that wants, that believes that this is something that they can use. That we would do that. We've been offered for, say, a week's time. We would start on Monday. We take the the bid pads off on. Friday and give them a week to get it out. Now, I know that next week is, um, obviously it's Thanksgiving, so we probably start looking because I still have a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty boxes of stuff that need to come out of the basement that needs to be shredded. We didn't have time to get that done either, so there's still, yeah.
I will say this, though. Your office on the end that you remodeled and rearranged really looks nice.
It does. Yeah, it it does, and we're we're getting there. I mean, as you've seen, all of the election equipment that was downstairs. That was, yeah, so we're getting there.
With that being said, Lisa, you know, I mean, I can go down there and say that. Or you can go down there and say and have a different opinion with say, this is, this is goes goes to the scrapyard or this stays.
Well, there's.
Yeah, obvious that some of that's gotta go, but if there's something in question. Let's, let's put a tag on it and if something gives you a buck for it, they have to haul it. We don't have to haul it.
Maybe we should do that to all of it and what's what's going. Let's do it that way.
Is it worth that to scrap?
So what's left of it, can we take it out here and donate it there or what do you want to do with it?
I told him that's what's gonna happen.
Okay.
They were saying, so we do that. Um. Based on what, based on what you previously have said.
To Clinton engines, I mean. Or to.
I believe that there was a discussion prior that whatever. We are not going to use, we believe is sellable. Um, that we were going to get rid of it first, so someone couldn't walk in and say, I'll give you twenty bucks for everything.
I think you're gonna have to tag it separately.
That's why I said I wanted to get the stuff out that isn't, so we believe isn't salvageable or sellable. We wanted to get it out first and.
Is this something that we have to advertise to for X amount of time?
Well, I think we have to promote that. People from the public can come in and look at what's there.
I mean, we talked about that the ad, the the. Not gonna bring your ad either.
That's the other issue.
Well, it's gotta go and that's the right way to do it.
And and I mean, so we either have to do one of two things. Either we do nothing. And whoever comes in takes and bids on everything and and it's as is right now. Um, or we have to take out what we believe isn't sellable. And let the the public come in and put a bid on it. I mean, you tell me, it's easier.
I think you should blue tape those things that you wanna keep.
There's nothing that we wanna keep.
Know that you might wanna sell. And the rest of the stuff. Get rid of it.
That's, I I mean, that was my o- opinion on how to do this, and again, a decision needs to be made about the tape. You know?
Put it up for sale, I guess. It's something that has to be in a heated area that's particle board.
I know somebody that wants a nice four-wheeled car down there to they.
Is mine. I leave on it. Do uh. Can you make a picture of that table when it was up at the, up at the office or open hospital? Do we have a picture of that table before we took it down?
I don't.
I don't.
Thanks.
I know I don't.
Yeah, I don't think so. Yes, I know. We need to get it cleaned up.
But is is the table? Um. I mean.
It's it's usable, but I do believe it has to be bolted to the floor to make it stable. Is what I, it.
It breaks in the middle. If you tried to pick it up and move it, it would not fare well. I mean, you added a little more. It's like a taco bolt where it puts it together in the middle. Is that correct?
Right, something like that. And it's all particle board.
Yeah.
Where the other one, what we got from the care facility down there, solid wood.
So where's that table now?
The one from the welcome center?
Yeah.
Is in their conference room. Yeah, Mike, Mike and uh. Yeah, sanded it down. They were trying, there was a couple green stains on it, so they sanded it down and refinished it.
Oh, cool.
The top of it.
Good.
And it 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 isn't perfect because that once, there's a big stain. About that big round that we could not get out. We didn't wanna sand it, so it had a dip in it, you know?
Okay.
But it looks a lot better.
Okay.
That's where the owl nest.
I think it's a coffee pot that's out there too long or something. I don't know for sure.
Um, I go to Des Moines this week, so that's why I'm like, I don't have any time this week, so maybe next week you and I can get together.
Yeah.
Uh, and we can start taking a look and and.
People bring it up to me. They wanna know.
And it's. Different time.
Per- permanent.
It's time, it's time to move on there, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I will bring you the tape and when you feel that.
How about next week? Let's next week, you and I will work together because. You might just will bring the truck.
Is there X amount of things down there that's obvious that can go?
To me, sure.
Yeah, I mean, Marty, use your best judgment there.
And then it'll be clean tomorrow. Um, couple other things I did.
Put a tag on it, see if I'm watching my head.
Um, what, what's it? The shekel guy over here, what's his name?
Tony.
Tony. Went to Lisa and wanted the green lights around the courthouse and. Between Lee, I couldn't come up with other anything, but Lisa come up with some green cups and we just stuck them up in there and it worked good, I thought. If it was green, he.
Red and green for Christmas.
Well.
In red and greens.
I've been all over looking.
Somewhere as dirty, I got a Santa Claus that I always wanted to put on the chimney too, so. Uh, cause we don't, as you know, we don't throw it out in the way.
I guess that got awesome. I shut that door.
Hey. You know, that's weird because I can't believe I threw them away. I don't know where they went.
I can't believe you threw it away either. They're in play.
It was a door, but they they wanted a solid and they were glass like this. And, yeah.
So not to bring up.
I've got a couple in the shop.
Okay.
And they're the right size.
Okay.
And they've got a twelve inch by. Two-foot window in with a wire mesh and safety doors.
All right, but.
They're solid wood.
Apparently, and things have changed since the, but they wanted as soundproof as they can get it.
Well, that would be, I mean, that will work in here for that storage one, I don't.
That comes with a heck of a price, though.
What's that?
To get it as soundproof as we possibly can.
Right. I did contact.
Just send a bill to the clerk.
Yeah, I was gonna say because.
Boy. We're, we're gonna have a problem there because they want, they, they're already wanting air conditioning back in there. If they had to move all that equipment back in there.
Well, Lisa said they would be asking for that.
Okay, and just that's between you both. Uh, they would not let his electrician just put a plug it in. He had to give him a bid on it. And like he said, you know, if I can get through the floor, because everything electric is all on the floor of this building. He says if I can get it there. It's a couple, three, four hundred dollars, and if I can't, it's a thousand dollars. You know, so I have that bid. I'm gonna give that to them and they can go from there. Uh, but uh. Seems like there's something else I wanted to bring up.
Well, anyway, so yes, kudos to you though, Marty. Thank you for putting up. I know they were cups, but you know, it worked and.
But you couldn't tell it from the road. I don't look good. I was proud. I'll get it worked.
I I that does make a difference to our service people.
I I made a special trip.
Green solo coat.
Yeah.
I know, I don't, it did cost an hour and a quarter, so you know, yeah. But that was the.
We'll probably say and use it for now.
I'll see you walking down the hallway Christmas with a green solo coat.
Other than that, um, like I said, I still got a few, uh. I gotta take the mower deck off of the the Kubota and put the snow blade on it. I haven't got that done, but I do have the truck here and I'm mostly ready to push snow.
Okay. So it's snowing now.
I don't, but thank God it's warm enough that it's not.
The ground's still warm though.
Yeah.
Pretty much out of time. Saturday morning it won't be.
I should be good to go by then. All right, have a good week. And Larry, that. I do appreciate your service.
Yeah, thank you. Do you want that one door or not? From over here?
You tell me. Where, what, for, for up here from the county attorney's office there? I don't care if it works and it works for them. I have no problem with it. I did contact Lynn. He was gonna get. See if we could get one out of the hospital.
Right.
But he hasn't gotten back to me. He had to get a hold of.
Make a point to get back in touch with you.
I will do that when I step outside.
Do we need to touch base? With new county attorney and see what's. If they're gonna require or is it up to them at all or?
For the day that I talked to Peter and. Who's the?
That probation?
Yeah, probation.
Yeah.
And whoever, Addie. So I talked to Addie and Peter that day, took them up to the room. They were happy with it, but yes, they requested right away. And and exit. Mm-hmm, so they did request.
And I understand. If this is, is a a type of door that is a security door, sounds like, I mean. It came out of the old school up here is where I got it. So, I mean. Obviously, it's a heavy door. And it's. Ten and three-quarter by, and it's three foot by seven foot, oh.
Then we probably have to cover the glass.
The glass is a metal frame and then there's like a wire mesh.
Sure, I understand that, but they're not, they're not gonna wanna see each other, are they?
Well, then. I wouldn't put it there. I'd put it over in this for the. They wanna close off the record room?
Oh.
No.
Oh.
Well, well, no, all right, so I follow what you're talking about.
This is the clerk's office from the front office to the back office.
Well, they want that door back on?
There was a discussion, but I don't think it's formally been requested. Or immediate need. Yeah, I know, or immediate need is between the new probation and county attorneys.
And and that door to me should be solid with no glass. Could be like this. We have a door, we have a door down in her vault. In between the rooms. That would work if we, if we wanna steal that one. I don't, and then we could put a, just a, any kind of door in between there, couldn't we?
We looked at that, didn't we? We were down there the other day. We did look at that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something, you know, they could pull their locker in there.
No, so basically what he's talking about, we call them room one, two, and three, and between room room two and three, there is a solid door there.
And it's metal.
And it's metal, and I have no objection to you taking that and using it.
That would save us forty-six hundred dollars.
I think we're intuitive to do that.
Okay, touch base, touch base with Lynn first.
Yeah.
See what's up there. If you need that time to go look and see if there's something that we may want to pursue anyway.
Yeah.
If we need another door and hopefully Larry can still be. Um.
And I think we ought to thank Lynn for letting us use the generator too. That worked out good. Uh, and I will, I was gonna call him today because we're done with that. What's that?
It's not Lynn's generator, but.
Well, you know what?
Not yet.
He could have been a second saying, you know, you know, how fun people are.
Actually, good that it probably would run.
Yeah. Yes, yes, yeah, because it had, one had a flat tire and the other one had a dead battery. So, yeah, we took care of that.
I would think that would be. Something that says that it has to be run every so long.
That it could take.
Parameters as far as.
All I know is it was a, it's heavy and it worked really good.
That's good. That's good.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Marty.
Yep, have a great day.
Yep.
Okay, next on the agenda.
I would think that would be appropriate.
I think we'll do the win if that's okay with you, right? The win and go, we are executive of the city.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, yes.
We're gonna go out and build snowmen later on.
I don't think I will.
Okay, uh, calendar this week. Five o'clock tonight and it's an early meeting for the conservation board in her spell for Larry. By thirty this afternoon is Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission at Clinton Engines for any of you that want to go. Six o'clock is Jackson County Economic Alliance and they're meeting at Bellevue City Hall tonight or by Zoom and that's for Jack. Seven o'clock tonight is the Jackson County Board of Health meeting in community room or by Zoom for anyone that wants to go to that. Wednesday, November fourteenth at nine AM is an iris meeting. Um, interview or by Zoom for Larry and I think everyone else has that they're gonna be on Zoom. So, sure, let, sure, let me tell you that.
Oh, okay. I normally go.
Great. Stuff to sign anyway.
Hmm, you'll be the older one.
But she doesn't have things for you to sign, so that's up to you, yeah. Okay, nine thirty tomorrow morning is the Jackson County Senior Center Board, um, their regular meeting at Senior Center. Tomorrow from twelve thirty to three thirty PM is an Iowa workforce training, either in Des Moines or by Zoom. Um, and at three thirty tomorrow afternoon is ECIA, ECDC, their executive and council meetings, and that's interview for Jack. Thursday, November seventeenth at eight forty-five AM, the Bellevue High School government class, we're coming to the courthouse to have a tour of the offices. We'll talk to each office about what they do. At eleven o'clock is a Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa meeting, um, by Zoom only for Jack. And at six PM on the seventeenth is the Limestone Blues RC and D meeting, um, also by Zoom for Jack. Friday, November eighteenth at noon is a D cat meeting for Mike, either into it or by Zoom. Monday, November twenty-first at one o'clock is a waste authority meeting for Mike. At three o'clock is a regional governing board meeting, um. In Davenport for Jack. And at five o'clock is Mississippi Valley Workforce by Zoom for Jack, and then at seven o'clock also for Jack is the Together We Built Meeting, so it's a difficult Monday for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November twenty-second at nine AM. Um, I do have Lynn Bopes down on there to do an update for the regional governing board, but she will not be available that day, so we may have to postpone that by a week. At eleven thirty that morning is Mississippi Valley Work- Workforce Staff Appreciation in Davenport for Jack, if you choose us to go to that. I don't think I have any other business for you except the calendar today.
Thank you. That's your alarm clock?
Yeah.
Works.
Okay. Janet isn't on there yet, I mean. So you're. Well, Jackson County Economic Alliance is tonight, third. Millhouse Disability Services next Monday, so we have a man. Conservation Board. You're reading tonight? Okay. ECIA is meeting on. Thursday or Wednesday, whatever day it was. Hard to keep track of them.
John thought he might stop here this morning. He wasn't here yesterday, but he said he was coming today, but I.
I haven't talked to him.
Talked to him yesterday for a while. I guess at this, at this point, we'll recess. So I think we'll do Janet before we get into the. Moving online. Time reconvene the meeting and we're joined by Janet Moore. From, uh. NEI three A. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah, oh, we can now.
Yep. Good. Good. Well, I'm sorry I wasn't able to get there in person. I'm just kinda checking the. Roads from Waterloo, and it looks a little slippery in areas, so I appreciate the opportunity to meet you this way.
No problem. I guess Janet, our main question, um, and I know you're with the nutrition end of it. Um, but I I guess the lease agreement that we've had with NEI three A. Since the thirtieth day of July in two thousand and thirteen, it kind of outlines some of the programs and some of the activities that will take place at the senior center. And, um, uh. I guess from what we're hearing and from the conversations I've had with some of the people that participate down at the senior center. Um. Basically, it's, there's nothing. There's very few activities. They're not really promoting the senior center. Um, and I'm gonna just come right out and tell you, they say the food is absolutely awful. And so I I know you have to follow the guidelines that set up for nutrition. But I said, I I guess I wanna know what we're gonna do to make that a functional facility because it's not right now.
Yeah, um, I I will tell you that, um, we're we're struggling a bit with our congregate meal sites. Um, and and I think that's what you're you're talking about. Uh, the locations where individuals come and have the opportunity to gather and and visit and participate in the meal program. Um, access other resources that that our agency offers. Um, we typically are not. We're we're not an entertainment center, and we're not able to act as an entertainment center, and I'm afraid that might be what they're asking for. Does it seem like that's what the folks have been asking?
They wanna have a reason to go.
Okay.
And right now, food is not a reason because. Everybody says it's awful, and it comes from Bellevue. It's here. They put it in the oven and they warm it up. But, um, that's not enough of an incentive to get them to that building and the facility. Uh, I understand from conversations with, uh, some people from there and, uh. Another person that's on the NAIA through aid board said that, um, uh. It the. It's not inviting. They just, nothing is happening.
Mm hmm.
Obviously, they there have been, you know, is not a B on the services that are provided. Social and recreational activities. So is there any social recreational activities? That's in our lease agreement. That's that's number B on this.
B, and it's the answer to that is no.
Well. But above it, you may notice that it says such services may include. And so we may be able to do that, but we're not always able to do that. Um. Those activities, some of them that are being active are offered there. Um, we are working towards getting an exercise program going. Um. That's been kinda tough, partly related to COVID, partly related to the staffing issues that we have. Through our contractor to do that. They lost their director, and so we're kind of sitting tight until they're able to get somebody in place again. Um, we do wanna get our SIMS program, which is seniors in motion, up and going there. Um, I know that there are several, um. Card groups that are coming in and and playing cards. Um. I guess I I, you know. I'm not real sure. We've always relied upon. This senior boards, in this case, the Jackson County Senior Center Board, to be actively involved in creating some of those activities. Um, and and being the impetus to help make. Uh, it be the center for what the seniors there in Jackson County or particularly Macochata like or want.
They do have the the senior center board is meeting tomorrow morning at nine thirty.
My intent is to be there again, again, weather notwithstanding, and I don't know that I can zoom with them.
Well, I'm planning to attend that to just.
Oh, great.
Have dialogue with them as to. I I realize that they don't have a director. They don't have anybody that. Puts together the activities at the present time, but I also understand that you're in the process of trying to find somebody to manage the center or manage the two centers. Uh, jointly, um, uh, that's what I've heard, that one person will run Macochata and Bellevue.
Oh, yes, and and to be honest with you, that's sort of a luxury. Um. We don't have any other staff people who are, um, managing a single county. Most of our staff people are managing programming and nutrition services, uh, for. Three or four different counties. Um, so they 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 rely heavily on volunteers, and we found that the centers that have the most success have grown organically. From volunteers within that community. So we do rely heavily on volunteers.
Has there been any, any push to try to get volunteers?
I be I believe there has been requests as far as finding volunteers. Um, I I know, again. I will. You're right. We are looking to hire someone there in in Jackson County. Um, I'll be honest with you. You are aware of it, probably. Your. Unemployment rate. For people who are looking for work is great, but for someone who's trying to hire someone, it sucks. Last I heard, it was one point five percent unemployment. So the folks who want to work are working. Um. We've we we've been advertising since mid-September for this position, and we have two applicants. We did have, uh. Significant conversation followed by an interview, followed by a job offer, and I believe that that individual. Said no. They did refuse our our job offer, but we offered one. Um, and I think it was. I think it was absolutely a good offer, um, and it was forty hours a week between the two, the two locations. But she's, you know, this person refused the position. So we will go back to, um, again, trying to hire someone.
So, but. Um, Bellevue City Council on their agenda tomorrow evening have the approval of a hire.
Yep, but not for us. That's for their end, for for what they want to do there in Bellevue.
Okay.
They will be sort of acting as a bit of a. A volunteer on 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 NEI three A's end, so on days when we may not have a staff person there, that individual will be taking meal reservations. And, um, helping to serve the the noon meal, uh, making sure that the volunteers are there to pick up the meals for the home-delivered consumers. And then collecting paperwork, not doing record keeping, but collecting paperwork for us so that our staff can can do the record keeping that needs to happen. Um, my, I I do not know what all the Bellevue person's job description is. Um, we've visited off and on, um, with Abby about that position, and I can't tell you exactly what. I don't know that I've seen her job description, so I don't know what they're asking of that person to do.
Can you tell us what the average day meals served at the senior center are?
In 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 Jackson County, in in Macochata or Bellevue? Or both? Macochata? Um, it cut. Well, this is last week's, and it's a little a little off cuz we were closed for Veterans Day. Um, but Fridays are typically pretty low, so on on Monday, there were ten. On Tuesday, there were two. On Wednesday, there were three, and on Thursday, there were twelve. I believe on Friday, it's typically under five as well, but there are two large card groups that come on Monday and Thursday, and they often eat.
And those were people that actually came to the center to eat, or were those home deliveries?
Oh, no, no, those are the congregate meal site. The home-delivered meals are about thirteen consumers daily.
Do you have Bellevue numbers there in front of you too?
I do. Bellevue is very similar, just a few more, um, home-delivered meal folks between thirteen and sixteen on any given day. Um, and then they're only open for meals, uh, right now, one day a week, and they're getting between fifteen and sixteen. We had a few other people. Um, so Bellevue was, um, they had a program called Tai Chi for arthritis and fall prevention on Mondays and Thursdays. And if individuals came to the center for that program and then chose to eat. On either Monday or Thursday, we made sure that that was an option for them, and I think there was anywhere between three and six on any day that may choose to eat on those days. We are, we really wanna support. The building. We wanna support what's going on there. Um. We are required under our funding to do meals, to do evidence-based programming, to do outreach, to do some educational activities. Um, and because our budget is where it is, we don't have a lot of options when it comes to the. Meal offerings, and I know that's a bit of an issue for you. Um, I will tell you that the meals that were currently. Being served that do come from Bellevue, our prices for that meal has gone up about thirteen percent in the last thirteen months. So it's very expensive to provide meals. Are they the best meal?
No.
We've had some changes, and our meal price would have gone up another dollar and twenty-five cents. Had we not significantly made changes in the menu or allowed. Our provider. To make changes in that that meal, but we don't have options. We put a contract or a bid, you know, RFP out for bid for the meal program. Um, in the mid in the midst of COVID, July twenty twenty. And we didn't get anybody interested in providing meals in Jackson County. Now, we are also doing home-delivered meals for about fifty people out of Springbrook and Miles.
Yes.
So we are, we're putting significant food into people's bellies there in Jackson County. Um, we just can't. Those those places. We cannot contract with them to provide meals in either Jackson, or excuse me, either at Macochata or Bellevue because of our contract with this other provider right now. And I understand the disappointment about the meal quality. I get that.
So what what can you tell me, tell us at the present time? When you either get it from Geronimos or Shakers or whatever the place is in in Miles. What what does their, um, average daily cost?
Oh. I can't really tell you what their cost is, but I know that we're paying more for their meals than we are for the ones coming out of the Bellevue kitchen, but not by much. Less than a dollar more.
Okay.
So they're pretty, they're pretty reasonably priced, plus we provide the delivery. In both Jack, in both, uh, Macochata and Bellevue, and stalkers and Geronimos both do the delivery for us. So we're paying for delivered meals from those two providers.
Okay.
So I I as far as cost goes. You're. We're not gonna get a meal for less than ten dollars. Anywhere anymore. Not that meets our meal requirements. And so when we're trying to stay within our budget. This is what we're able to to provide. Do do I think, again, do I think it's the best meal? No, I do not. I but I don't think that that's the problem with centers. Um. See, how how many? Are you familiar with Cedar Falls? I mean, y'all know what that is, right? It's a pretty good center. It's a beautiful community center. It has pool tables and an arts and crafts room and, uh, a a full, a full-scale exercise room with. With mirrors so that you can really see how your your form is. Um. Meals are only being served there twice a week, and the numbers are between four and five people each day.
Well, I know they used to have quilters. They used to have, um, card players, um, that came in and actually brought their. Bridge clubs or their Uker clubs down to the center, had lunch, and then played. But that's, I mean, I don't know why that stopped. I know COVID was a big part of it, but.
Quilters are still, the quilters are still meeting, to my knowledge. I visited with them last time I was there. I I they I two lovely ladies were quilting, so. Um, I, to my knowledge, the quilters are still attending, and we're not stopping the bridge players from coming. They may certainly do that.
Well, I think. It all goes back to the quality of the food. They're not gonna go there and eat and play bridge, so they just go somewhere else. And we gotta get those people coming back. And increase the number, and it was stalkers.
It's stalkers.
Yes, I saw. I saw you smiling. No, it's not the strip club.
I don't know anything about a strip club. But Brett Stalker is who I have a contract with.
Right. Any questions from anybody else? Well, as I said, you'll be here tomorrow.
Weather my and weather permitting, my intent is to be there tomorrow morning.
I will be there cuz I'm only ten blocks away, so I'll be able to drive there. So, um. We'll just have a conversation tomorrow and and hope that we can come up with some solution. To make that place viable again because it's not right now. And it's actually not the best use of our building.
You know what? Absolutely, and if you folks feel like you have another purpose for the building that would be would better serve your community, let us know. Let us know. Um, there have been situations where we've not been able to hold a. Senior center because the location was no longer available for us. That doesn't change the services that we provide. So, you know, it's it's not that we, um, are trying, we're certainly not ignoring Macochata and Jackson County. Um, again, as I said, we've we've dedicated, we've we're, um. Actually increasing the staff hours if we can get someone. So if you know anybody who's interested. Please, by all means, send them to our website because we are entertaining applications. Um. And I I again, I believe it's a a good. Forty hours a week, and the the pay is anywhere from, um, nine fifty to twenty dollars an hour, depending on experience. Um, so, you know, we we we, I think we've got a very competitive pay scale, and our benefits package is pretty nice as well, so, um, it's just that. If people are working already, they're not ready to move because we haven't been able to find anybody, but I believe. There is a, um, an employment agency down there that we're working on getting, um, an agreement with, so they maybe can help us find someone as well, so. But our, I mean, we're dedicating some time and some dollars to Jackson County. That's been our plan since August. Uh, it's just, we haven't had very good fortune when it comes to finding someone who fits what we need done down there and is interested in the position, so. And and remember, this position could come. From anywhere in Jackson County, so their home base could be Bellevue. Um, we we'd like them to cover the two locations, so if it's someone from the Bellevue area, um, they they could work out of Bellevue three days a week and out of, uh. Macochata two days a week. There, you know, they would travel between the two, but that would be paid for by us and, um. Again, not very many of our staff people have the ability or the luxury of of covering just a single county. Um, so it. Give them lots of freedom, so.
Well, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
We'll. Try to struggle on.
I hope I hope to meet with you tomorrow.
I I'll be there.
All right. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, like with Bellevue hiring this person, does the city of Macochata have anything to do with the center down here?
No, they should have, but they don't.
That that should be conversation with Josh also.
Who would make that request?
Well. They must, I would think it would come from the senior board, like she said. I I I think they need to be active in. Either volunteer, getting volunteers, or if they want activities, I think they need to take it to the to the city councilor and say.
I agree.
We'd like to have you get involved, you know?
And I will talk to him about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know there's people that play, like they got the farmers markets for music. I mean, that's something that people really enjoy. And they used to do that.
Yeah.
They used to have people that entertained.
Uh, you know, like you said, Jack, I think, you know, the co- then restricted them from coming, and of course, it was a, it was a health issue for a lot of that people, so. I mean, it's hard to get them back once they stop coming. It it's, there's no doubt. I mean, you can't, they just don't allow, or they, you know, do they go to somebody's house residence and they play? That's.
I also need to get new.
You just can't expect them to. You just can't expect them to go down there to eat though when they get a hot dog and some green bean.
Yeah, you know, and that's, that's my mother.
It's not in Bellevue.
James Bond gets meals and, I mean, they bad.
How long is this meal contract for that you talked about? They couldn't get anybody to bid for it and two years ago and now all of a sudden they have a contract.
Well, the contract is through thirty-three.
The food contract now, or lease?
The lease for the building that they, they operate.
Do you have, have a food contract, right?
I don't know.
It sounds like the meals from the other two are good.
Are good, yeah.
But she said that they not serve that?
Well, she said they can't ask those two people to do the, here, because they have a food contract here. What is that food contract? Where does that come from and go through or how long?
Well, they, Bellevue and Jackson County is actually one unit.
Right.
So whoever has a contract from Bellevue, because that's where they do the cooking,
Right.
they bring the meals over here, they stick them in the oven.
Yeah. But I mean, how long is that kind, that, so that food contract lasts?
I have no idea.
So that, so in fact, if that's gonna end soon or could be gotten out of.
And I don't know what, yeah, I mean, I know Geronimo makes a lot of meals for them and he's got mostly volunteered delivering, but you know. I mean, they, they get something.
Yeah, but he possibly gets a little bit more, like a dollar extra meal too to deliver.
But if they could deliver five meals to down here.
I could go through Bubba's or someplace and get a burger and fries for ten bucks. I mean, it'd be.
Wonder what the meal regulations are that make it taste horrible.
There's no salt, there's no salt in there.
Do they really serve hot dogs? I didn't know that was a nutritional.
Well, I think that would, into that category.
I wouldn't have thought it'd fit into the nutritional category.
Oh, I don't know. Cheese sticks and pizza sauce qualifies for the schools.
Well, we obviously don't have any solutions. I do know who applied for that position because she told me she did. And it just wasn't, it wasn't. They could have negotiated, I think, more.
Nobody's ever worked for nine dollars an hour.
She said that for twenty.
It's not how it works for twenty.
But they gotta offer that.
Yeah.
Well, she said they would. She said it ranged from nine.
Right qualifications, so. We put in all the meals and everything on top with that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay.
All right.
Now it's on to announcing the election.
First off, what we'll do is I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November eighth, twenty twenty-two bird proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspaper.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second to approve publication of our previous meeting. Paul votes in favor.
Alright.
I.
So here we are a week later. General election twenty twenty-two was held last Tuesday from seven AM until eight PM when the polls close. In Jackson County, we had seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three people come to the polls or vote absentee to elect our next set of leadership for a fifty-three point thirty-four percent turnout. It did shift a little bit between absentee voting and voting at the polls. So our overall, we voted absentee, just fifteen percent of the people voted absentee and thirty-eight percent of the people voted at the polls. So overall, I think this is a good turnout. I know that I visit every precinct on election day and there was not a precinct that I went to that did not have a lot of people. I would say that, as we discussed before, we did have what I call hiccups. We expect things to happen and we did have some prayer issues. But in the end, everybody was allowed to vote and we had everything fixed by seven o'clock. We had extra computers. So there was no, you know, dropping of an emergency ballot. We had everybody voted and put their ballot into the scanner. Overall, I think that election day went very well. And so, I mean, like I said, we're gonna have hiccups and we did have some new delivery people that was very well. Absolutely did very well. And we know that we learned from this election as far as what we will do in the next election. And we will make some changes again, but some of the good changes that we've implemented and I thank Mike for helping us out. Mike was one of our, what we call runners at the end of the night. That's what these envelopes represent. These envelopes represent what the runners do is they do pick, they go to every precinct. We have runners for every precinct. They pick up this little TM that is the brains of the election along with a, a tape for. We run everything twice. So this is an election summary. Here we go again with this grocery receipt that we talk about all the time. This is the one thing that we print out of every machine at, on the end of the election night. This gets out printed twice. One of those gets put into this envelope, the TM, this election summary and also a write-in report, which is this one, another long grocery receipt. What, what people need to understand that for every ballot, it doesn't matter if you vote absentee or if you vote at the precinct on election day, when you write someone's name in and you darken in the oval, this is a snapshot of just what the, what's on the ballot. And as you can see, you can see people's names. And here's a good example where someone darkened in the oval, but they didn't write in a name. This is considered a blank. And overall, like I said, we had seven hundred and seventy absentee votes. So last week, starting on Wednesday, believe it or not, starting on Wednesday, I.
L and T or not write-in?
So there were, there were write-ins when people voted absentee.
Seven hundred and seventy write-ins. Write-in.
Uh, we actually had two thousand two hundred and forty-one absentee people that cast an absentee ballot. So yes, excuse me. So seven hundred and seventy times that oval was darkened in on all of these positions that were on the ballot and every one of them have been counted. So that was what I did last week. I came in on Sunday. So I had everything broke down by precinct and then we had to do an overall, put everything together because write-ins do make a difference. People get elected by write-in. Let me speak specifically to the hospital board. There were four positions on the ballot for five openings. So only four people filed nomination papers. One person chose to have their name written in on, for that position, for that, for that office. And that was a little bit of this morning's confusion is in some reading and we conferred with the Secretary of State's office to make sure that what we think was right. Let's specifically talk about Deb Renner. Deb Renner, her name was written in a hundred and thirty-seven times on, between absentee and election day for the hospital board. So she is the winner. She takes that fifth position. There was a change in Iowa law on, they used to be six-year terms and they now go to four-year terms. There was a little bit of confusion between the information that we were getting. And so to make a long story short, Deb Renner has won that office with a hundred and thirty-seven votes, but it is just a two-year position. And the reason why is because we need to get that staggered terms. So there's four people, so we elected five people this year. Four of them will have a four-year term. One of them, which is the way that the code reads, the person that receives the least amount of votes will get a two-year term. So the four that their names were on the ballot are a four-year term. Deb Renner will receive a two-year term.
You wouldn't think they'd go three and two.
Well, it's four and three.
Four and one.
There's.
You said there's four people got four-year terms, there one person.
But you already have, you have two other people that received. So that's why they're trying to get those terms to stagger.
So the other two, the other two are also come up in two years. So there will be three positions.
That's right. This year, four will be a four-year term to get on the staggered four and three. Right, right. So anyway, that's, that's the thing is that, as I said, Mike was one of them. We went to every precinct and then because of what they call chain of commit, chain of custody is the main thing. These, all of these tapes, this TM goes into this envelope and you can see that we have a, an Avery label basically is what we use. And we label over, we make them seal it, we label it over. So we are the ones that do open this. But that way you, Mike, can't, somebody can't accuse you of pulling over and manipulating the TM. This is all, it's timestamped, it's signed, it's, you know, signed by the election officials. It was signed by you as far as you picked this up on November eighth at eight nineteen PM. And, you know, so that's the thing. We keep track of when all of this stuff is coming in, so nobody can ever accuse. We have a good chain of custody when it comes to these TMs.
Oh, that was the first one.
Yes, yes, that's right.
I will say this, that the whole place is when you go there, you have a bunch of responsible. You know, if they, if they ain't the most nervous people that are up there, well, they are, they are dedicated to their job and doing it right. I will say that.
They do an absolutely fabulous job for us. And what's really remarkable about all of this is that they're not doing this every day. You know, we, I know this year we had an election in June. You know, we won't have another election now till next, well, we probably will have a special election in March is what I'm hearing. But otherwise, we won't get together again to do, as election officials or PEOs are called, until next November again. So this is really amazing when you think about it. They only want to do their job.
Yeah, no, they do it.
They do it and they do it very well. And you know what? When they have questions, they do a call. And believe it or not, I think Bjorn, his phone rings, my phone rings, every, everything is because we do need to want to know what's going on, if there's any problems or not. The good news is that everybody that came to the polls on election day, they were all allowed to vote. We did not have any provisional ballots, which is really good. I know that there are some counties that are dealing with provisional ballots. We did not have any. And there were ballots that were received yesterday. Iowa law does allow what we call a UACALA, which is the Uniformed and Overseen Citizens and such. We did receive three ballots yesterday in the mail. Two came from Canada that were mailed on October twenty-seventh.
Hmm, wow. It's been a long time.
Yeah, if you think about that, it was two weeks to get. So it's really amazing, but Iowa law allows for that. So those ballots did count. So we have current, so what I need today, I have an election canvas summary, I have abstracts of votes and I have a certificate of election. And the other thing that happens is that sometimes people get rolled in, like I talked about. So we will draw out of the, our very snowy jar today. So Van Buren Township trustees to fill a vacancy. This is a vote for two. Four people got one vote. Each got one vote. So we're gonna draw two names out of here to figure out who will be the Van Buren Township trustee to fill a vacancy. And we'll marry here. Really? Yeah, no pressure. There's one.
Oh.
I need two.
That one, that one.
And that's two. See, there's two left. And you put two in my hand. Okay.
So looking at going back, how many, did you get any other mail-in ballots that didn't matter?
We did. I don't know if I know that number.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure I know that number. But here's what I think is the most amazing thing. I know that before election day, when I asked Mary how many absentee ballots were back, I always anticipate in an election like this, I know that the other day before the election, we were down to ten percent. I believe we got down to two percent of ballots that were not returned. That's amazing. Absolutely amazing. So so you were the, you, we can blame you. So James E. Jacobs and Kenny Bradycamp, their names were pulled out of our container to Van Buren Township trustee to fill a vacancy. So.
So they will have to agree to that.
That's right. Just like what.
Do they know their name was within that?
No.
You know, that's just it. They don't, yeah, see, people, I mean, honestly, Donald Duck, Bugs Bunny, Chris Kringle, you know, Donald J. Trump did very well. So, you know, people's, people put names on these knowing and maybe they want to put their name in, we don't know. But they do have, now we will notify these people. They do have the option to not accept the position. And then it creates another vacancy. So that's what will happen there. So we will notify those people. The next one is for Tatum Moore Township Clerk. This is just two lucky people that get put in the jar.
You're drawing two?
And you only gotta draw one this time. You can add this to your.
My resume?
Your resume, yeah.
To that one?
Nope, it's two. Yeah, there you go. Yep. And there's, you can see there's one left. Okay. So Tatum Moore Township Clerk. It goes to Johanna Jaeger, J O H A N N A H Jaeger. So that's who is to be apparent winner of the town, Tatum Moore Township Clerk. The election officials at the end of the night, this is what they sent back to us. This is considered a tally book. This tally book is a forever. You cannot ever get rid of this information here. So you can see we have all of the same tapes. We have all of their signatures. So we, that's a forever piece of paper also. So today, based on everything that we've gone through, I would need a motion to authorize the board to certify the true and correct abstract of votes cast in Jackson County on November eighth, twenty twenty-two general election, as shown by the thirteen regular precincts and the absentee precincts, and authorize the board to sign the official state abstracts, county abstracts, and further authorize the chair signing the certificates of election and authorize the auditor Smith to move forward on sending the abstracts to the state of Iowa as presented.
No move. Okay. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
I.
I. Motion hearing.
And I have just one other thing that I'd like to say. Um, I honestly don't have the answer to this, but we do talk about maybe being in a little bit thinner after election day. As I was out and visiting with all of the precincts and as I had stepped into Pearson and to other precincts that were affected by the combination of precincts, which you as a board did last, started last December and we finalized the first of the year. Um, at that point, we've also had a June primary and we sent out cards to all registered voters in Jackson County about this precinct change. I really only had to notify those people in those precincts that had changed. But I elected to have cards sent to all over fourteen thousand of our registered voters in Jackson County. So everybody knew which precinct they were going to. And then we had the June primary and I honestly can't say that I had that many people. I did have a couple of people question me about that, but it was minimal. Then Iowa law says that we have to consecutively publish and we did it in all three official newspapers of the change of the precincts where we made the consolidation at. We even spent the extra money to have it done in color. Three weeks in a row in three newspapers. I have a bill to show it, that we got it done. Then again, we also, in the end of September, first part of October, we mailed out those same over fourteen thousand cards again to all registered voters in Jackson County, telling them of their new precinct. So I, we've had a public hearing.
Better go get a cookie. Yeah. Morkini bars.
We've had a public hearing. We've had, you know, a public meeting about it. A decision was made that was published in the newspaper. At the time that it was published back then when we did it, we also published at the same time, the supervisors districts. So we've published once. We sent notices out twice. I published for the third time. I believe that the newspaper has covered this. And I'm telling you, there are some upset people that says that I didn't do my job in notifying people of these precinct changes. Honestly, I don't know what else to do. But.
You can lead them to water, but you can't make them drink. So I'm just saying, you know, they have to have responsibility for themselves about where they're gonna go and what they need to do. It's still a responsibility, no different than getting up and going to work. It's your responsibility to do it.
You know, I, I could understand it if the only option you did was the newspaper, because a lot of people don't get it.
Right.
But with sending them out two cards.
Yep.
They ought to have read the, their mail and saw where they were supposed to go.
I drove out Monday. I drove back out on Wednesday to Baldwin to take the sign off the door. We had a sign also in Miles both times. We had a sign also in Miles both times. So, I mean. I'm just telling you as a board that there are some upset people and that you may hear about it. Um, I know that I have. I don't know, I think I've done, I know I've done everything that I possibly could have done. Um, I know that for the few times that I was on KMAQ, we talked about it. So it's like, I don't know what else we could have done. I've done radio paper. Um, something in the mail, but I will tell you that there still are some people that are upset with it. Um, I did receive a couple of emails concerning it, so just I'm telling you that. I've done everything and then some, because honestly, I didn't even have to do that. I didn't have to send to all fourteen thousand. I only had to send to those that was really affected by the change, but we always want people to know. You know, where they should go and vote. We thought we were making it easier when I was down. At Pearson when it was very busy down there and people did walk in with their postcard in their hand. So I knew, I mean, I received, I received them at my house. Um, I just, I'm I'm I feel bad about it, um. But I really believe that I, I I really believe that we've done. What we were required to do plus. So I know that there's a significant amount of of signing this afternoon, this morning here. And um so you can, if you would stay and and please sign all of this, I would appreciate it. This does need to, the state is very particular about when we stuff, send stuff to the state. As far as the canvas and such, it can't be double-sided, it has to be packaged differently, so. Um, that will give the rest of the office, as you heard me say, I am headed to the moon and um we need to get that done. Um, let's see, other than that, do you have any questions for me?
No, just compliments.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I mean. Um, this is, as people say, you know, how long have you been working on this? If you really think about it, the nomination process started, you know, in the spring. People came in and talked to us in February and, you know, so we've been working on this election since probably February, March and. To see it come to the end here, um, we should have everything, I hope everything is wrapped up by. Next week is my, is my goal. So um with the last comment that I have is. Two things, actually. The first thing is that this afternoon at twelve thirty, we'll, we will be conducting a post-election audit. Last Wednesday morning, uh, Mary and I joined a Zoom call with the Secretary of State's office. And they do this drawing of all ninety-nine counties of which precinct they selected for us to. Um, have a a post-election audit done on. It is our old seventh precinct. It's our, now our new sixth precinct, which is the townships of Monmouth, South Fork and Makoka Township, but the cities of Baldwin and Monmouth. We will be looking at and hand counting just short of six hundred ballots. Uh, we will be hand counting the governor's race. And that is to make sure that what was reported on election night, how the machines worked and how the hand count. You know, to make sure that everything is still good. When we get done with the governor's race, we're gonna, we're gonna start all over again. And they also have requested that we do the constitutional amendment, which would be on the backside of the ballot. So we will be doing both of those offices or positions. We're gonna do that this afternoon. Hopefully it won't take that long. I have three people coming in to to do that. I did read an email this morning that it sounds like there potentially may be a statewide. Um, recount. So I think stay tuned. I don't know, we'll have to see, um, if, you know, anything changes today with a lot of counties canvassing yesterday and today. If it has made any changes or not, but if that was the. Um, to be aware type, there is a meeting, a Zoom meeting tomorrow morning to talk about it. Um, for the last four or five weeks, Mary and I have been. On a Zoom meeting, went to Secretary State's office with all ninety-nine counties. So we all are hearing the same thing and doing the same thing and asking questions and. Things like that. So there is another meeting scheduled for Thursday of this week and I believe that they'll be discussing it at that time. If we have a statewide recount. So stay tuned.
And how many votes, I mean, would you have to recount everything?
Yeah.
By hand?
Um, I'm gonna wait for uh the direction from the Secretary State's office.
A statewide recount on everything?
On just one particular office.
Okay.
I believe that the vote count is below over two thousand votes. So I'm gonna wait to see if the candidate would have to. You know, there's many ways you can ask for a recount, so we're we're just gonna wait to see what happens.
Okay.
And with that, that's all that I have for the board today.
Oh, sweetly.
I know, no, no. No, there's a lot of signs, yeah.
Okay, is there any other business to come before our meeting today?
Like motion adjourned.
I would just say to your staff. Um, give them our appreciation.
I appreciate that, I really do. I mean, uh. There's a lot of, there's a lot of hours that go into this election and I appreciate that people do notice that we can make a difference and we do make a difference. So, yes, thank you.
All those in favor of adjourning?
I.
I. I, motion carried.